Yeah, yeah. Everyone set?
Yep.
Okay, counsel, it is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, November 19th, 2024, and I will call this regular meeting of the Berry City Council to order. Counsel or manager, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mayor, just one. Under Item 11, Executive Session, I'll be giving the counsel an update on labor negotiations.
So noted. Counsel, any adjustments? No? Then we'll move on to Item 3, Visitors and Communications. Is there anyone wishing to address the counsel regarding an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, counsel, actually, I would like to address the counsel under Visitors and Communications. If you could take one and please pass it down. That would be appreciated. Counsel, this will take a few minutes. I'm here this evening to introduce the counsel to Eugene Cozy. Mr. Cozy passed on October 7th, 2024, and was interred at the Cozy Family Mausoleum in Hope Cemetery on November 9th, 2024. I gave each of you a copy of Eugene's obituary, which he wrote prior to his passing. I am the trustee, successor trustee of the Eugene Cozy Trust and the executor of his estate. The vast majority of Mr. Cozy's assets were held within that trust. The trust agreement was originally executed in 2014, and it was amended over the years. The last amendment was in October 2023. So my role as trustee is to administer the trust in accordance with the trust agreement executed by Mr. Cozy. So I'll just review the steps with you briefly, if I could. First of all, I inventory and safeguard the trust assets. I sell the assets as instructed by the trust agreement. The net proceeds of those sales, that is added to the trust corpus. I pay Mr. Cozy's just debts and final expenses, and I administer the trust, and I file and pay all required income tax returns, which would include personal fiduciary and estate returns as required. And then I distribute bequests in accordance with the trust agreement. In the Eugene A. Cozy Trust, there are a number of specific bequests, in other words, fixed dollar amount bequests, that will be distributed. There are only two residual requests within the trust. One of those residual requests requires that 60% of the residual trust be distributed to Hope Cemetery. And I actually have, under Section 14 of the trust, I gave you a copy of the specific bequest language. So as I said, one of those residual requests requires that 60% of the residual trust be distributed to Hope Cemetery. The other requires that 40% of the residual trust be distributed to the city of Berry, Vermont. My preliminary estimate is that the residual estate will be a little north of the $4 million range, with 60% of that residual allocated to Hope Cemetery and 40% allocated to the city of Berry. So I'll be working on the processes that I described earlier over the next six to eight months, and I will issue a final accounting upon closure of the trust. The next important step that I'll be doing is I'll be meeting with the city manager and the city treasurer regarding the composition of the trust assets. Currently, approximately 85% of those assets are held in marketable securities and mutual funds. As we all know, over the past month, generally speaking, the market has done well, and the securities have increased in value. However, you know, they can just as easily decrease in value. So my recommendation to the city, as the residual beneficiary, would be to liquidate the marketable securities and place the proceeds into an account that would not be susceptible to market fluctuations. If desired, we can employ a number of strategies to ensure any balance against risk of loss. So going forward, my primary points of contact will be the city manager and the city treasurer. Thank you for your time. You know, I hope you take the time. Eugene was a pretty unique man, and I hope you take the time. I know we're all going to be hearing a lot more, and rightfully so, we're all going to be hearing a lot more about Eugene and learning a lot more about him and how much he enjoyed growing up in Berry and how much that meant to him in the final years of his life. So I'm sure that you're going to be hearing and learning a lot more about Mr. Cozy over the coming months and years. Thank you.
Thanks.
So is there anyone else under Visitors and Communications? Hearing and seeing no one, counsel, we'll move on to Item 4, which is the Consent Agenda. That consists of the approval of the minutes of the meeting of November 12th, 2024. Do we have any licenses to issue this evening?
We have a permit. I did present it last, or it was in the pack that I emailed you, in regards to the 802 Community Angels additional auto. I wasn't sure where that went during the meeting.
I thought we approved that, but you know, you weren't here, so I might have blown it.
No, it was contingent upon receipt of, if I'm remembering correctly. We approved it.
Thought that was Dollar General.
Is that in the minutes?
Oh, oh, no.
No, it was. When I was watching the video.
Okay, if it's not reflected in minutes, why don't we do that? Why don't we take a do-over on that one? Is that okay?
Okay.
Yeah? Okay, so we will be approving that, counsel. That was in last week's packet, not this week's packet. And lastly, do we need? What the council will be doing, obviously, folks won't know until they, but if they do know, it's because they learned, is we will be recording the meeting so that we can, but we will not be inviting participants. We will record the meeting so that folks who want to refer back to it may. So, counsel, I believe we are at Item 4A on the agenda. This is approved. The city warrants for the week of 11/20/2020.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. Miss City Clerk?
Hi.
How are you?
I'm well. First of all, I want to start off with saying that the second quarter tax collection has ended as of Friday, the 15th. We are still recording and data entering current payments that are coming in through the mail and that have been entered on our credit card forum. Secondly, for the nonprofits that receive allocations through, on an annual basis, we will be sending out the application packets by the end of the week. They need to be returned by January 2nd to be considered. Thirdly, we are also sending out renewal applications for entertainment license, the annual entertainment license for all of those who held them last year. And those too also have to be back by January 2nd to be considered.
And I know there was, I'm sorry, questions, counsel? So there's been confusion when liquor and lottery switched to a totally online platform.
Mm-hmm.
There was some confusion. Folks didn't realize that they still had to send their application into the city clerk with a separate fee. Has that, you think folks are better at that?
They are, they are.
Much better at that this year?
Yes, they are. Yeah, that has been cleared up, and it actually, it's, the application is emailed, the alert is emailed to me, so I log into the lottery, liquor and lottery site, to see the application. Then that's when I contact and ask them for the payment. And most are now on board with it. They know the order of business, that city payment comes before it's approved for them to be sent back at the state level, and then they pay the state fees.
Understood. Okay, counsel, any other questions before we move on? All right, Liquor and Cannabis Control Board, I don't believe you have anything.
Yes, we do that.
We do.
The special events permit for North Branch Vineyards, that was in.
Thank you.
Last week's packet. I just, I didn't see.
You can say it, I blew it again.
No, I didn't see anything mentioned about it last week. They are, they asked for a special events permit through Department of Liquor and Lottery. They're going to be at the Mary Berry Holiday Fair on November 30th, and they will be selling their goods up there. They just need to have permission to do that.
Understood. Need a motion, please, in a second?
So moved.
Second.
You can take your pick.
Yep.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. Mr. Manager, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick updates. First is just to continue to encourage people to sign up for Regroup. We're over 600 people signed up, so steadily climbing, but really encourage people to get there. Like I said last week, it's the fastest way, most surest way to get notifications from the city, because as I mentioned, I can't always send messages if I'm, from VT alerts, if I'm not near a laptop, but Regroup messages can come from my phone. So they may be duplicative, but encourage people to get on Regroup because that is the 100% guaranteed way to get messages from the city. And especially encourage people to sign up for Regroup because we are in the winter parking ban season, although we've gone to the modified rules. So we're watching the forecast, or maybe first snow coming this weekend. So this is a great time to sign up for Regroup as we start to get our first storms and we can test these new rules. And if you want to, if you're a tenant, if you don't have off-street parking, especially if you want to get refreshed on the rules, right on our homepage on the scroll, you can get all the information about what we changed, how it's working, and how you can get notifications. So those are my only two updates tonight.
Thank you. Yes.
A quick question for the city manager. So for, I got some questions about the Regroup app for people who don't have a cell phone. You had said that we were going to be giving the option to, giving the option in Phase 2 to get telephone calls. Is there a way to just get emails?
I believe they can do just emails, yeah.
Can you sign up? You don't have to get an app, because if they don't have a cell phone, they can't get the app, so could we?
We may have to do a different tutorial for that, because that, the process will be different.
If you do the signup on our website.
Yeah.
Automatically, it searches your email.
Okay.
You don't have to put in this.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just thinking that the.
Check and make sure.
Yeah, well, would you mind doing that same thing, but doing it there? Well, just because I don't think the microphone picked you up as you were answering the question. And don't worry, I know it's a work in progress, so it's nothing we're going to hold you to.
No, no problem. I think you can sign in on our website for the Regroup signup with just your email address. I'll have to double-check if the phone number is required. I know that the home phone is not required. I'll double-check on the cell phone.
Right. Because there are definitely people who have a computer in their room and would be happy to sign up for email, but just don't have a cell phone.
Yep.
And then the other thing that I was asked is, assuming that this pilot program works, would we move away from the portable digital signs to more permanent digital signs, like they have in Burlington sort of thing?
I think so. I think that if we can, if it can be successful and if streets can get cleared, and if we, if people are responsive to, to the system, that, that would be, the long-term goal would be to make it be that way, the illumination on the street signs, especially for the main arteries anyway.
Yeah, okay.
So I think absolutely that would be a goal of ours, if we can be successful this year.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Do you know how those are activated? Is it by cell signal? Is it, I mean, there isn't some poor guy that's got to go around flipping the switch on everything.
There's got to be a better way.
Yeah, no, I don't know whether they're cellphone activated or, you know.
I'm not sure.
How they are.
Something remote now.
Yeah.
I mean, 2024.
Well, you'd think, but, yeah, just, just wondering. I mean, I think it's a great idea, just wondering how, how we pull it off, you know, one-year period, but we'll see. Okay, anything else for us, sir?
That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. And counsel, we'll move on to new business. This is under 8A, set our legislative, or set and discuss our legislative priorities. Counsel Wazizak.
Thank you. I'm going to shift down there so I can do mostly listening today, but just the two cents that I wanted to offer before we dive in is that I would strongly encourage the council to hire a lobbyist for this session again. You know, we have Senator Cummings and Watson in the room, former Representative Anthony, I'm here, and I'll be speaking with Representative-elect Buttigieg as well about what we discussed tonight. But you have your two reps, our three senators, those are five out of 180 people advocating for Berry, and if we have a lobbyist, that is six people advocating for Berry in the building, and every single voice that we can get fighting for flood recovery. You know, we, the Democrats had a supermajority last session. We had two Democrats in the House and three in the Senate working for us, and it was still very hard to get flood recovery priorities across the finish line last year, and it's going to be hard again this year. So I would just strongly encourage the council to consider hiring a lobbyist again for this legislative session.
So before you go down there, how was your first day at school? Would you like to tell us about it?
It was huge, first day of school vibes. There was a lot of Schoolhouse Rock, how a bill becomes a law. There was a lot of, I have my iPad and my legislative email all set up, so it was a, there was a delicious lunch with salad and pork chops, so it was, it was very good.
You enjoyed it?
But yes, looking forward to getting to work.
Awesome. Fantastic. Okay, I think the manager has a presentation for us, and actually, counsel, I put together a list of my own legislative priorities. When I saw the item on the agenda, I thought we would be discussing things, so I just put a list together, and we can review that after the manager goes through his legislative priorities.
Thank you, Mayor. And mine are very brief, just to get the ball rolling and certainly the things that we've talked about at the staff level. So number one on the list is operational aid. Last year, the city was very grateful to receive a million dollars from the state legislature. And, you know, we, we talked a lot at the Capitol every time we were there, that these needs were long-term, these weren't going to be, you know, these holes are not going to be solved in a year. Very grateful for the 1 million, but obviously it means it needs backfilled, and I'm not saying the full way, but sort of a gradual, a gradual weaning off of it would be helpful, because otherwise it's just another hole, as we were facing last year, and we know that our, our tax base just won't recover as quickly as we need it to. Item 2 here, more of a, somewhat technical, but the voters last year approved two, actually three charter changes, but I mentioned only two here. One of them was separating the clerk and treasurer duties, so that one's important, just so that we can get long-term clarity on the roles here in City Hall and in the finance office. The voters also moved, approved moving town meeting day permanently to the second Tuesday in May. The council's already moved it for next year, just so that there wasn't any uncertainty, but it would be helpful just to have these ratified early in the session. The third one was a relatively minor change about getting rid of outdated school language in the charter, so that's very, very, you know, technical language to get, clean up the charter. The third is an item that had the chance to speak to the Senate Transportation Committee about last year, and we face this quite frequently in Berry, that we, we don't have the fleet to really prepare for a lot of these major events. When we are aware of the forecast for potential flooding, one of the things we like to do is have DPW go and clear catch basin storm drains so that the water can get out of here as quickly as possible. We only have one vector, we only have the need on a regular basis for one vector, and so, but, but having an additional vector that the state owned and perhaps stored in one of the garages in the region and was used by Berry when we knew there was a storm coming, or was used by Waterbury when they had a, an event, or Montpelier, whoever, you know, municipalities don't even have vectors, and they could certainly use them. So having some sort of shared fleet, you know, we talk, and I mentioned here leaf vacuums or communities that have them, that may seem like a small niche thing, but, you know, helping clear out leaves is helpful to keep storm drains clear. It's a good service for residents, right? If instead of bagging leaves, we can have people rake them to the side, right? That would be a service that I think people would love. It's hard for us to justify that kind of fleet on its, on our own, but I'm sure there would be lots of use for vectors, leaf vacuums regionally, so if the state purchased one or two just to have in the region, or maybe a couple more, that, that communities would share, that would go a long way. And it'd help us not just prevent flooding issues or water issues, but also just provide better services to our residents. And then finally, just on the flood recovery mitigation, I'm sure there's, there's a long list here, but the two that are really important that have sort of come up to the top for us on the staff level is funding for non-FEMA buyouts. We've, we've gone through a really painful discussion the last, you know, couple years about the buyout process, and the, the current FEMA rules are just very prohibitive for the city. It pits us against homeowners, and so we'd love to have the opportunity to, to get people out of homes that they no longer want to be in, but also preserves the city's ability to develop and grow and meet our other needs. So having resources to, to accomplish that is important, especially in Berry where we're geographically limited in where we can develop. And then one other item that we've been pursuing is river gauges. Right now, our, our river gauge, if you haven't seen it, is painted in spray paint across from the public works garage. It has a happy sign at four feet and an unhappy sign at six feet. And so it's very low-tech. We depend on Montpelier's river gauge information to have an actual river gauge, and then we try to extrapolate, and that's not always helpful. It's, it's, I think we're at the point where we've had enough events that we should have our own river gauge. You know, a river gauge here would be beneficial to the state, to the region as a whole, so, you know, something like that would be, as we, as these events become more frequent, would be very helpful to have actual data that we can use to, to plan for, for events like this. So those are the, you know, those are four. I know the mayor will run through some others as well, but those are four that rose to the top with the staff. You know, Counsel Wazizak kind of touched on this issue, which was the only other point I'll make in my comments, which is representation at the Capitol. I, I agree, last year, the representation was really helpful, especially, you know, for myself navigating the Capitol for the first time, it was great to have people there to shepherd us along. So, and it was successful. You know, I think that the 1 million in operating aid, which was the most of any municipality, was important. We got elevation funding, also very important for, for residents here. So I think there were many benefits of having that professional assistance. So that's one question for the council tonight, which Counsel Wazizak previewed, which is whether you want to retain professional representation again. I do have a proposal from the person who represented us last year for $1,000 per month. Just as a reminder, we were represented by the firm Leonine last year. This current proposal is from Atlas Government Affairs, which is the individual who handled our account, who has started her own firm. So that's just a question for you as a council to, to decide if you want to pursue that, pursue that route, if you want to have representation or not, and if you want to pursue last year's lobbyist or not. So that's, those are just some open questions that'd be helpful if.
And we've got that coming up, to, coming up, we've got a meeting coming up next week, I believe, don't we?
Correct.
So we can get the proposal in your packet.
Yep.
And put it on the agenda for next week. I mean, I'm resounding yes. It is incredibly helpful, and I believe the contract started actually in December, did it not? I thought for some pre-planning.
I think they did that pro bono, but I think the official billing started in December, and we did some prep work. They included some meetings in December for, for planning.
Okay, so I'd have, you know, again, I don't know what the proposal says, but I think it would be important for, you know, for our lobbyists to sit, have an opportunity to sit with the council for a few hours in December and talk about our priorities and, and who we can speak to and how we might best accomplish that. So if that's not within the proposal, if you could just.
Sure.
Expand the scope to include some pre-planning.
Absolutely.
That would be great. Awesome. So I think, so I think the council will definitely be on board with that. Thanks for the suggestion.
I promise that I will be quiet. But I also want to underscore the, the great price that $1,000 a month is for a lobbyist in Montpelier. That's a crazy bargain, and while this lobbyist now has their own firm, having the institutional knowledge of everything that happened last year, understanding the issues that Berry is facing, and not having to, you know, start from scratch between now and November, I mean, between now and January is a really, really big.
Yep, absolutely.
I would also be a strong yes on this, so I would look forward to seeing it in the packet next week.
Okay, so we'll get that, we'll get that on the agenda for next week. If you want to.
Do you want to do the priorities document or the housing document?
Why don't we do the priorities? Counselor, Representative Wazizak, do you mind? I've got some copies for the three of you in council. I think I brought enough.
I have some. I had Chris run some in case.
Oh, cool.
Because of the potential outage.
Couple that way, couple that way. Oh, I've got enough. Look at that, brought enough for everybody. Awesome. And then I've got this guy as well. Need a couple that way, one for you, one there, and a couple more that way. Awesome. So, I mean, the, I have the opportunity to speak with other mayors through the Mayor's Coalition, talk to other mayors about what they're seeing in their, their communities. So I came this evening sort of prepared to discuss what I see as some of the legislative priorities. Some of them, I'm sure, are self-evident. You know, under housing, additional state resources and programs to address the unhoused population crisis, we've been, and, and listen, I'll preface with what I had to say with, I understand that as difficult as our budget is here in Berry City, the budget at the state, as you well know, as Senator Cummings is going to be, is going to be just as difficult. The numbers are just bigger. But we really need to, to shift, in my opinion, from a program that seems to be, doesn't seem to have a lot of predictability to it. It seems to be very, very reactive, and we just, we just need a program that we can depend on so that we, we know what to expect, we know what we're going to receive. Municipalities know what they're going to receive for assistance, and they know what they're not going to receive, and they know, you know, where they're going to be on their own, and I certainly understand that, you know, the state can't do everything, and I know that. But it would be helpful if we had a more robust predictive program to address the, what really is a crisis with unhoused Vermonters, and a more regional approach to assisting unhoused Vermonters that, that allocates the responsibility statewide. A lot of times, we, I feel, I don't want to speak for the council, but I feel like, like sometimes if you have a larger municipality, that more of the responsibility sits right on your shoulders, and you're sort of left on your own to deal with it. And even smaller municipalities like, like East Montpelier and Callis and Williamstown, they're, they're not immune to, to folks, you know, in their community who are unhoused, and I think we need to take a more regional approach, and everyone needs to sort of pitch in and, and do their share. So I hope that, I hope that any, you know, any policy, any statute would, would sort of reflect that, that, you know, truly, we are a brother's keeper, and we are in this together. Sometimes, honestly, as a mayor of Berry, it doesn't quite, and I'm sure for those sitting on the council, it doesn't quite feel that way, sometimes. And, you know, for Berry, and this goes to the numbers thing, you want to pull up the numbers thing a little bit? And this is, look, I, I'm happy to discuss this with you anytime. I'm not going to bore you by going through all of these details, but I think, Senator Cummings, I think we've discussed this several times. You know, when you look at why, why we're not building housing in Vermont, you know, I talked to developers, I talked to young couples who want to either buy or build their own home. It's cost. It's not any other reason. I mean, Act 250, some of the permitting reforms, that might have had a little bit to do with it, but if you talk to anyone about why people aren't building homes, why developers aren't building apartment buildings in Montpelier or Berry or, or single families or, or young families aren't building duplexes, it's cost. They can't afford it. You know, it's $450,000 if you're lucky to build a relatively modest, single-family home. And as a realtor in your A job, no, you certainly know this. So until, in my opinion, until we, I really appreciate when you see efficiency Vermont offering $5,000 rebates for more efficient HVAC services. I appreciate that, I truly do, but we all know that $5,000 is not going to move the needle, that it needs to be a little bit more bold, it needs to be a little bit more impactful. So what I came up with is, and again, I won't go through all of the details, but in essence, what I came up with is a program that basically says to anyone, doesn't matter what your income is, it can be a single family, it can be, a duplex can be a single family with an ADU for mom and dad, it can be a 50-unit apartment building, anyone who wants to build housing units, we will, we will pay you upfront the equivalent of 10 years' worth of property, excuse me, nine years' worth of property taxes. So if it was a single-family home and someone wanted to build a single-family home, and they would, they would come in, the process is simple, they would come in, they would visit with the city, they'd give us their plans, and we would all agree, the city and the homeowner or developer, if it was a larger project, would agree that, you know, in my example, for example, that, hey, annually, you know, your property taxes are going to be, you know, pick a number, $8,000 a year. We would take that number, multiply it by nine, and you would actually get a check for that amount. It would be the last money in, not the first money in, so you have to complete the construction, you have to get a CO, but the moment you get a CO, much like a bond, you're. But the moment you get a CO, much like a bond, you're going to receive this payment. And what the city does is, over the next 10 years, the city takes the property taxes that you pay. So obviously, this would require legislative approval, because we are talking about educational property taxes as well. The city would have to bond for that money in some capacity. And for the next 10 years, the city would take your property tax payment, they would apply it towards that incremental bond. And essentially, at the end of 10 years, the bond would go away, and you would just continue paying your property taxes as you always have. Matter of fact, from day one, the developer or homeowner would just pay their property taxes like they always have. It's a simple program, you know, it's not complex. But the beauty of it is that municipalities always get their property taxes, always. If someone builds a home and doesn't pay their property taxes, it goes up for tax sale. The municipality gets their property taxes before the bank, before whoever financed the project, before the IRS, before the Vermont Department of Taxes, before any creditor. The municipality's always come first. So in terms of the repayment stream, the municipality is essentially bulletproof. So like I said, it's, it's a little complex, but it works. I mean, essentially, it would buy down the upfront costs of building either, you know, an apartment building, a single-family dwelling, by about 20%. And I think, and I think that would move the needle, whether it's infill development, infill would qualify, new construction would qualify, anyone would qualify. Kind of a bold concept, maybe a little scary to some. And that's why I would say, I'd say two things. First of all, let's just do a pilot program. So you don't have to, you know, first of all, I love Chittenden County, you know, I do, but, but Chittenden County doesn't qualify. I'm sorry, no. We need this for central Vermont, for other municipalities in Vermont, and not necessarily for Chittenden County, where, you know, quite frankly, the development is rather robust in Chittenden County. And secondly, when you think about this program, just think about this, and I'll ask you this simple question, and I've asked this question of a lot of people. If we could wave a magic wand right now, and 100 units of housing would just fall out of the sky and plunk in different places around central Vermont, but the only catch is that we can't collect property taxes from that homeowner for 10 years, you know, they don't have to, we're not going to get that property tax revenue for 10 years, would you do it? And pretty much everyone has said, yeah, I'd do it. So, you know, why don't we try it? It's something that hasn't been tried before. I realize it may sound a little crazy, but a lot of my crazy ideas work. So, and it's just.
And you and I had, you had mentioned that to me several years ago.
Yep.
It's on my list of legislation I'm putting in for discussion. I might be able to get a pilot. The issue is property taxes.
I get it.
And this is money that's not going to go into the ed fund. To do it, we'd probably have to do away with economic development TIFs.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure where the legislature will come down, but, yeah, we, we, the market, the demand is there, and the market is not responding, mostly, I think, because they can't, because of the cost. And it's infrastructure, it's been suggested, we look at federal, the federal infrastructure money, don't put it into roads. That'll also be, yeah, a hard fight, but I can tell you, I'm going to put it in for discussion.
Thank you.
We'll see where it goes, because Montpelier, I believe, is going to be doing a bond, that's all I've read in the newspaper, for infrastructure, for, for one, one set of housing that's going up. And, yeah, it costs, the infrastructure is essentially the same for a $300,000 house or a million-dollar house.
Right.
And, so, if you can offset that, then you can afford to do a more affordable home.
Exactly.
It would be so much nicer if we could get a federal assistance, because it is a national problem, but I'm not holding my breath on that.
Look, yeah, and I'm realistic about a Trump administration, what that might look like for Vermont. And while I'm very proud of a governor for taking the stand that he did, you know, I think, I think we all understand the reality. So, and like you mentioned, you know, I talked to you about this three years ago, so I'll ask a third question, you know, or make a third statement. If we had actually done this three years ago, we'd only have seven more years to go, and we might have 50 more homes in Berry City or Montpelier. You know, I just don't see any of the existing programs moving the cost needle. And when I speak to developers, when I speak to single-family homeowner, when I speak to anyone about who just wants to put an ADU on their home for mom and dad, everybody talks about cost. I can't afford it. So if we can buy that cost down, honestly, and put more workers here, 200 positions open at Central Vermont Medical Center currently, put those people here, when people, I mean, look at the economic benefits of homeownership. I mean, you could probably, I know you can give me the number off the top of your head, how much people spend in the first six months when they buy a home? It's a big number.
Oh, yes.
It's like $50,000, $60,000 in economic impact, you know, getting those workers here to Vermont, collecting those income taxes, the sales taxes, room owner's taxes. I think there's just so much benefit to it. You know, if, if I asked the question today and said, well, do you wish we had done something like this 10 years ago, and we were at the end? Probably everyone would say yes. But every year goes by, and in my opinion, we miss an opportunity. Councilor Stockwell, did you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, but I, you know, I think this is a great plan, we'll see what happens to it.
Yeah.
And I also had some ideas, but, you know, you should definitely send it.
Oh, absolutely. Well, we got, we got about 30 days to push them all this way. So, so moving back to my list, you know, a statute change to allow property tax stabilization agreements within existing TIF districts currently that's prohibited. And, you know, I'm just looking at things and say, okay, what has been some of our effective tools? Councilor Stockwell's a big proponent, as am I, of infill development, developing upper floors, you know, within, within our downtowns, and which could certainly happen in Montpelier. But when you have a TIF district, and you want to offer some sort of property tax stabilization agreement, and that's prohibited, it's one less tool.
And with municipal taxes.
Correct, but not education.
But not with education.
Education has to go through VEPSE, and I wish they'd have a streamlined process to allow you to do that, because it just, with all due respect to VEPSE, it just takes a long time. It's, it's a real bureaucratic, you know, exercise. And then lastly, under housing, you know I was going to ask for this specific funding for rebuilding our North End elevation, you know, elevation money, mitigation money, and then, of course, new development money. You know, under natural disaster and mitigation, a more robust, predictable, multi-year funding source for mitigation projects. Look, I wouldn't mind if it required, I understand that we're all in this together, if it required a 50% local match, you know, help those who help themselves. And if Montpelier or Berry is willing to commit a quarter of a million or half a million dollars a year in flood mitigation, I would hope the state could step up and perhaps help us. Representative Wazak?
Thank you. And, yeah, on this point, I'm looking at, I'm going to be meeting, I've spoken with Senator Cummings specifically about this, I'm not sure if we've talked about this, and I'm going to be meeting with the Treasurer's Office, the idea of a workshop named Vermont Flood Resiliency Fund, so that, you know, we are fortunate, as compared to some of the other towns that have been impacted there, that don't have public works departments, that don't have the resources to hire a lobbyist, and that forces municipalities to go and duke it out through the legislative process every year, and we know this is going to keep happening, and it's not sustainable for us to have to go through this every year and figure out what company we're getting from the state or are we not from a flood mitigation standpoint. So I appreciate.
Yeah, and what I would really appreciate is something, you know, again, predictable and long-term, as opposed to the annual appropriation where you hope, like heck, it's coming back next year, but you really, these projects take so long to plan, we just, municipalities can't react that quickly unless it's a real multi-year plan. So I'm at, yes.
Oh, and I think it's a great idea, Mayor, and just one other comment, just from the operational standpoint, it's really difficult to cobble together funding streams for multiple projects, right? So a lot of the projects, whether it has a match or only funds a certain percent of it, then you have to go and try to find it before you can get it going. The other thing, and we mentioned to this to Senator Welch when we were doing the North End visit, is, you know, I suspect many of my colleagues in municipalities would also possibly take, you know, we have, for example, in the hazard mitigation grant, we, you know, there's 90 million in the pot, we could, you know, apply for 10 million, we might get 15 million. I suspect many other managers would also take 5 million if it was guaranteed, like if it was a smaller amount but guaranteed, because that's 5 million we can get started on right away. So the, you know, the 10 million is wonderful, and it lets us do more projects, but if the 5 million were faster and guaranteed and could let us get started right away, I think that would help us, because one of the, you know, one of the frustrations that, you know, many residents feel, and I, and I hear it, is that we weren't able to start any mitigation projects before we got hit again. You know, the application period hadn't even come and gone. And so, more money's great, but guaranteed money is, is better. So thank you, Mayor, I think this is a great suggestion.
Hey.
Yes, of course.
If I may just, something that the manager said, also, we had a great many meetings with the River folks, who were lovely, and, and very helpful and very wonderful, but one of the things that impressed me through that process was the level of technical expertise and assistance necessary to apply to that program, not just in the application portion, but also in the, the pre-engineering development, and the ways in which you had to prepare the application to be scored. And for highly complex projects, that makes a ton of sense, you've got to get your ducks in a row when you're applying for them. But I would sort of echo what the manager is saying, that if a city was willing to put up $250,000 and could get another $250,000 to use on a project that required less than six months of council meetings with technical experts, but was something we'd already identified as a priority or had a plan for, that, I think that would be a phenomenal improvement.
So, moving along to health, you knew this one was coming, you know, drug overdose deaths. You know, if you look at them, they've increased consistently in virtually every narcotic category in the past five years, kind of led by fentanyl. So obviously, we need additional resources and treatment centers to bend the curve. I mean, I think, I was thinking about this the other day, Governor Shumlin, 2018 is address, State of the State address, 18?
No.
Was it 18 or?
Six, I think it was 14.
Okay, so 2014, that long ago?
10 years.
Oh, the drug speech was 14.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So 2014, it took a long time for us to make progress, but we made progress. And then unfortunately, the pandemic came along, people were, you know, were isolated, people weren't getting the support that they needed, we weren't meeting in person, and, you know, we're seeing the results of that now. And obviously, it's really unfortunate, because we've, we've lost a lot of ground, and the problem continues to get worse, and, but we've really got to focus on that problem. You know, there are just too many people, just too many people who aren't getting the support that they need.
It's not, that and all that are one thing, but I think Berry and Montpelier have always had, be kind of a congregation area for people with any kind of issues, because the services are here.
Mm-hmm.
But what we're hearing from law enforcement now is that the drug overlords have discovered that Vermont has minimal police coverage. You at least have a police force. We were in Waterbury last week, they don't. And that we are seeing increased drug activity and violence in small towns. How many murders have they had in Williamstown in the past year?
Right.
Several. So yes, we're going to have to go back and hit this, we have to dry up the demand, which is the treatment, and we're going to have to get back there. But, yeah, locking people up for a year or more in their own homes did not help that situation. So, yes, we have.
Thank you for the great segue into public safety, which is my next topic.
It's next.
You know, additionally, currently in the city of Berry, we're five officers down. And it's not from lack of trying, and it's not from, it's not because we don't have a police force that anyone would be proud to be a part of. It's not leadership, but we need additional recruitment, retainage funds to produce, to reduce the number of vacancies in law enforcement agencies. I mean, they're seeing it in Burlington, we haven't heard why, but their police chief essentially gave his resignation this afternoon. He will not seek reappointment. And I think Chief Murad was an incredible leader and advocate for, for the officers in Burlington. You know, one of the things that I think about, and I realize that there are a lot of small municipalities in Vermont that are represented by a lot of representatives and senators, but there are some municipalities that rely 100% on the state police for coverage, and they don't pay for it. I just don't think that's right, you know, when you, when, you know, they have issues too, and our public safety dollars, if the city of Berry decided to dissolve our police force, not that we would ever do that, but if we decided to, the Vermont State Police would essentially be forced to cover the city of Berry. So, you know, I think we've just got to look realistically at the problems, and smaller municipalities that are afforded state police coverage are going to have to pay for it. And those dollars could perhaps go to, you know, addressing public safety concerns in some of the larger municipalities where a lot of these activities are, are occurring, because let's face it, a drug dealer is not going to try to sell their product somewhere where there aren't people. So, did you want to say something?
Oh, well, I, I just sympathize with that sentimental significantly, that there are a lot of services, but public safety being one of them, that the, often the larger municipalities end up providing for the small surrounding towns, so. And, you know, the other thing that comes to mind is dispatch, that, you know, has a similar model, I suppose, that there are towns that just rely on, on the state for dispatching. And, again, they're not paying for it. So, there is a crew, there's a committee that's looking at.
That's changing.
Yeah, county-level government and what could potentially be strengthened. Not saying that that is, you know, that county's going to be taking over dispatch or taking over, you know, public safety, but I think it's worth looking at that regionally, or like, what are we obligating all municipalities to, to do if they're not going to have their own, either police station or dispatch center, or have a contract with someone that does?
Mm-hmm.
So, I think there's a lot of work to be done there.
And I, I really like the county form of government, so you don't ever have to worry about bringing it up to me. No, I mean, it's, you know, spending a lot of time in, in other states where they have a more robust county form of government, where literally, that's where all the land records are. That's where they collect all the property taxes. Don't get worried, Cheryl. But it works. I mean, let's face it, there would be, still be plenty of work for people to do, because there's no shortage of work to do. But when you take all of your land records, and, for example, if you took Washington County, digitized them, and they were all online, and, and I've asked every attorney, if you had to pay a $3,000 a year fee, and you had all of the records in Washington County all online, and you could subscribe to that, would you do it? Universally, they would. So I, I love the county form of government, which is great, you guys are great, because it segues right into my next point, which is looking at a more regional, sustainable approach. And I'm just talking about EMS and fire services, because I'm watching smaller geographic areas really struggle with volunteers. I mean, that, if you look at the numbers and you look at where they've been, there are certain smaller volunteer EMF facilities that I can point at and say, that will not be around in three years statistically. So we really need to, you know, get ahead of that curve. You know, again, it's just volunteer attrition and an aging workforce. And then lastly, echoing what you said, Senator, you know, let's revisit minimum sentencing guidelines for repeat offenders of all crimes, whether it's quality-of-life crimes, but obviously, I would like to emphasize those trafficking in narcotics and opioids, you know, and fentanyl. It's just, you know, it's getting, when you look at every community and you talk to folks, people are feeling increasingly unsafe. When I talk to folks right here in City Hall, who don't always feel safe, at 7:30 in the morning, going from their car in the parking lot 100 feet to the back door, that's a problem. You know, and it's something that we, that we need to address, we need to, and I'm not suggesting, you know, I'm not sitting here with, with six guns saying, you can arrest your way out of every problem, but I think it's gone too far the other way, that there's just, there just doesn't seem to be any accountability, there doesn't seem to be, you know, any concern, because folks know, and even, and it just, you know, the effect ripples through the community. The folks who don't feel safe, the police officers who feel like, okay, I, you know, I can do this, but it doesn't matter, because I arrest them, and, and by the time I get back to my cruiser, they're laughing at me. You know, it's just not good. And there just needs to be more accountability within prosecution, you know, and public safety.
I mean, my brother just retired as a police officer after 36 years. I'm wondering why anyone would become a police officer. You know, the whole defund the police, it's like you're just assumed to be bad.
Yeah.
You could make the same pay other places and not risk your life every day. We send you out to deal with humanity at its worst. If you're unionized, you probably have some kind of social, emotional kind of support back of you. If you're not, you don't. It's a very difficult job. And everybody, the state police, Waterbury does pay for two officers 40 hours a week. And one of them is out on disability, so they have one officer to cover everything. The sheriff was telling me he's got a contract with one of the small towns. The amount of contract would probably cover his gas to get out there for a year. Probably not even that. I wish you luck, because I started having regional discussions on fire and EMTs almost 30 years ago. And we weren't ready then to give up our local control. We were just trying to talk about sharing a fire chief, which is essentially an administrative job. Why do we have three of them in a 15, 10-mile radius? The time may have come, we've tried. But it would be much more efficient if we had some kind of a regional system. The volunteers aren't there anymore. I mean, the example to me was the Middlesex Church, next, across the street from the fire department. It burned. I think Waterbury got there first and then Barry and Montpelier arrived. The last on the scene were their three volunteer firefighters, and the fire was out by the time they got there. If you had to depend, because your guys aren't working in town anymore, so they can run over and jump in the truck and take off. That whole system has changed, and we're going to have to change with it. And I just hope we don't have to have something bad happen to make that happen. I hope, right now, the pressure is enough to make the local voters say, yes, we do need to do this.
That's a great point. You know, occasionally, we have discussions about mutual aid, our mutual aid system. And it's essentially, our mutual aid system is really an honor system. And at times, folks will say, well, you know, gee, you know, does Barry City, do we, do we give more than we receive? And the answer is yes. And then someone will say, well, maybe we should stop giving. Maybe we should try to save money. And I'm not really interested in being the guy who says, no, we're not going to come when your mom's trapped in her home. You know, nobody wants to be that guy. And honestly, it stinks when you're more on the giving side, because you feel at times like you're being taken advantage of. But the price to say no is not coming to the aid of someone whose home is on fire. You know, you think of that, and it's a true story. Was it in, it obviously wasn't in Vermont, but there was a, there was a municipality where you actually had to pay for fire protection. And you literally had to pay a fee to the local volunteer organization. And there was a family that didn't pay. And their home caught on fire. And the volunteers came and they parked the truck and they watched it burn. Everyone was safe, but they literally watched it burn, because they didn't pay for the service. And they wanted to prove their point, which is, you got to pay for the service. So, you know, you don't want to be, you don't want to be that. I'll never be that guy who says, no, we're going to exit the mutual aid system. If someone's in trouble, we're going to help. But, you know, maybe in this council, I know, would never do that. But maybe the next council will. And then where does that put our mutual aid system? So I absolutely agree, Senator, with everything you're saying. And my last request, I mean, that's, this is a softball after the, you know, all of these guys. We really need an additional extension on our Tiff district. We got, we got the two-year. You were incredibly helpful, as was Senator Ram Hinsdale. That was because of COVID, because literally, you know, everybody stayed home during COVID. And we felt like, hey, it has a 20-year shelf life. And we felt like, all right, we got gypped out of a few years here because of the COVID-19 pandemic. Well, we couldn't, when we were so grateful for that two-year extension, we couldn't have imagined that our municipality was going to flood two years in a row, to the day, back to back. So we did. So if the Tiff district could be extended, because obviously, while we were in recovery mode, it was pretty difficult to encourage development in our downtown. So if that's something that could be accommodated, I'd really appreciate it. Counselor, did you have a question, Counselor?
I did, yes. I was hoping to ask the Senator, Senator Watson had mentioned the county study. What is the timeline on that? And can you talk a little bit about the scope? Are they, is it built to give actionable recommendations? Do you have a sense of when things will move?
I don't, I think they're a two-year study. But I can get back to you with those details. I don't have them off the top of my head at the moment. But the scope is pretty broad. It started from government operations last year, talking about flood recovery and how, because Vermont doesn't have a strong county government structure, that we had a hard time accessing FEMA funds. And so that was the platform. But it sort of rapidly expanded to everything from like transportation to public safety. And anyway, I can tell you more later. I don't have that off the top of my head at the moment.
Thank you. It would seem to tie in nicely with the manager and staff's recommendation about buying regionally placed fleet vehicles and resources and things like that. I know the recommendation on the PowerPoint was at a state level, but only so far you can drive a vector in a day, when you need to get it somewhere quickly. So, yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Representative, you got to call your, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I think the Counselor.
Oh, Counselor Dearing.
Two. One is a regionalized watershed approach. We constantly talk about, you know, what happens up and downstream, and then we're just really doing stuff here in Barry. So having that regionalized watershed approach is something that's really important to me and as well as many of the people that live here in our community. And then another one that's really important is selective riverbed maintenance. That's a huge topic that's talked about here in Barry City, as well as within our region. So I'd really like for you guys to try to take that up and hopefully get some action on that. At least kind of figure out how it used to be done before, why we're not doing it now, and if we can continue to not do it or to do it. Obviously, what's going on isn't working. So hopefully, we can work together and fix that.
Yeah, so just on the riverbed maintenance thing, I think that's worth digging into, worth finding out about. And I know that, you know, there's been a lot of hesitancy around, let's say dredging. But there are places we know that we're choosing to fight the river. And so there may be some, there may be some places where it is appropriate to do that kind of, you know, work or other riverbed maintenance kinds of activities. So I think, I think that's worth finding out about in a conversation and what that could look like. And then in terms of the watershed approach, definitely interested in that. We did some work last year that ended up turning over the regulation of river corridors to the state. There's a lot of municipalities have flood hazard area rules, but not a lot of municipalities had river corridor rules. And so that was one way to think of it as like, I guess, it's kind of skipping the regionalized area and just went straight to the state so that the state could coordinate all of that, which I think is probably good. It's going to be a big job for them, for sure. But as far as like floodwater, you know, flood hazard area mitigation stuff goes, I think that's, I think something we could look, there's definitely opportunity to try to do more coordinating across municipalities. Yeah. Especially because all of that, well, we also, I think we raised the bar to have the, like, every municipality had their own standards. And so we were trying to make sure that everybody had the same base minimums, so that they were just easier for the policymakers, the regulators actually, to evaluate.
Makes sense.
But yeah, happy to be, touch more about any of that.
Certainly.
Definitely important, so.
Counselor Stuckwell?
I would also love statewide resilience in flooding, that they're, that we're looking at vulnerabilities and that we're planning for how to do adaptations in a timely fashion. I don't know if we can no, any longer do a timely fashion, but we could see this coming. We knew that the rivers were going to flood. That would be the nature of the climate we're in now. So whatever we can do to assess vulnerabilities that we don't know about and to implement adaptive measures before something else happens. And to that end, I would also like, if there's a statewide assistance formula for infrastructure repair. I'm sure Barry is not alone among municipalities with aging and often failing infrastructure. Without, and it's very expensive, as you know, to replace it. We need to replace it, we need to make it better. If there was a statewide formula that said, okay, you have a master plan for replacing your infrastructure over the next 20 years, great, we'll help you at this level. That would be, that would be terrific. I think that, and I can't imagine there's a municipality that wouldn't say, oh, some help for infrastructure, that sounds good. I like the flood resilience fund, I think would be a great help.
Yeah, and some of the conversations I've had about that, you know, I think that what we've learned over the past two years, certainly in Barry, but around the state, is that each municipality's experience with flooding events is entirely different. And their needs are entirely different. So the city of Barry was able to mobilize and send out our DPW crews to clean up the roads and all that. Whereas you have Plainfield, you know, their damages were about 10 times more than their annual municipal budget. And so I think that, you know, in thinking through a multi-year funding that we know is there, that would allow the administration to put together, let's say, a rubric for, all right, Barry, you received a million bucks last year, so you're not getting a million this year, but we can give you this much, and then we can send that money.
Especially if you do this in terms of preparation for the next.
Right. And I think that the thought of all the legislators that I've spoken to from flood-impacted communities are, for some towns, it's infrastructure; for some towns, it's housing; for some towns, it's a mixed bag of all of these things. And getting municipalities money as quickly as possible to address some of these problems, I think we all agree is the goal.
Faster is better. There are a few more things I was thinking about. I also totally, totally support regional government. It would be so helpful. You know, all these small municipalities struggling with the same issues. We can't really easily share resources. It would be so much more efficient if we could do so. So I also would like to see small housing initiatives. It'd be great if there are more homeowners. And we have some programs for doing that. They're great programs, but they're not quite enough programs. And we have some loosening of the regulations that were passed last year through the, was it 100 that was passed, the housing bill?
Yes, that's 100.
Act 181. So all those are great, but obviously, we need more. And the more people who can own a home, the more stability we'll have in our communities and the greater security they have, you know, roughly speaking. So for, if we had ADU incentives, for instance, if the water and sewer hookup, the city needs that money. But if there was a pool in the state, you know, a limited pool, but people could apply, or the municipality could apply for them to get the cost of the water and sewer hookup waived. So that would be like, that's like $4,000 in Barry City. And that for someone who's a small homeowner or is looking to own a home or divide their home, that would be great money, right? That'd be really important money for them. And then they're creating more housing. And I wish there was a place for a housing innovation funding. Maine has, the University of Maine has the world's largest 3D printer, and they're creating houses out of wood scraps. I don't know, you know, that's been at least three or four years in the making. We have some municipal properties, why can't we try one here? And raffle it off, you know, just do something big, but something that's different. And, you know, if it's faster, cheaper, and easier, that's a really attractive way to build or to create anything. A comprehensive, oh, I'd like to see that the green infrastructure initiatives that are like low cost or no cost become part of a statewide education program. You know, like the Department of Health did with COVID and the vaccines, that was great. If we could do the same thing with, don't cut down the trees around your little brook. Do put in a rain garden. You can do these simple measures that are going to make your property more flood resilient. But it needs to be an education program that is easily available for folks and widespread.
Thank you.
I think that's it, thanks.
Counselor Spalding?
Yeah, many of the things that I had noted have already been mentioned. One of them was county government, recognizing that we could probably take advantage of a lot more opportunities if we had county government. The other was addressing the needs of our unhoused. And the, and in relation to that on here is health and drug overdose deaths. But I also think tied directly to that is mental health. And I specifically worry about kids living in, well, living in a home that's really not safe or living in, not in a home, but in a car or a tent at this time of year. And I worry about how we're continuing to perpetuate problems, because we're not addressing root, you know, basically their basic needs. And so how do we get to the point where we can help our kids with their basic needs to make sure that we're not creating the next generation of people who are going to be struggling? And I also agree with infill housing. And I specifically am thinking about the fact that, I was reading an article, I think, in The Times, I guess, about how many of the businesses in Montpelier are concerned about there's not as many state workers anymore. And those buildings are empty, and I think we are seeing that here as well. And so how can we take advantage of these empty buildings and create more housing for? We need more housing. The buildings already exist. We know state workers aren't coming back. We know our, you know, people are working out of their homes. And so how can we have some incentives for creating apartments and shared living opportunities in buildings that already exist, in our downtowns? So those are my suggestions.
Counselor Dearing?
A concern that many constituents have brought up to me is reinstating the benchmarks, goals, or work requirements for those receiving AHS funding, like SNAP benefits or cash assistance to reach up. Those work requirements were suspended many years ago and have not been reinstated. So really just putting those back in place towards self-sufficiency. If they need mental health counseling, we can get that done. If they can't get the help that they need, then the state will then know about it. And that's one more statistic that they can actually work on and say, well, we don't really know how many people need mental health, but actually, this is the number now that we have. So it's getting a better assessment of those that really need the help at really the most basic level. Talk about the children. It also gives them the opportunity to receive what they need. We see many opportunities that are missed with people that are coming through doors of AHS, but we're not giving them what they need in order to be self-sustainable. So that could help with a lot of different things within the current situation that's going on with mental health, with drug abuse, with our work situation, with getting people back into the workforce. Lots of different things could be helped with getting that out there.
Counselor Stuckwell?
There's one small thing I forgot. We all know that we have fewer and fewer children in Vermont. And yet we need schools that work. And I know, it's like, okay, so fix that. But we need a statewide something that works. The schools are going to have to consolidate. And I know the last time it didn't work well. And this time, you know, for obvious and great reasons, people look at their small community school and they don't want to give it up. They need help to come to the decision. And we need to think about ways that, how can we make some sort of community solutions work for young children at least, and consolidate schools at, as they, as children get older, and it's a more appropriate, a more appropriate move? So.
Small one.
Small one.
Yes.
If I could tag on to that, I also think because people are really very desperate for some kind of help, they're just struggling with how to pay their bills and affordability. And I know you guys have heard that. You were door knocking, you were talking to people, you were in. you were in parades, I'm sure that was the thing you heard, that's the thing that everyone is hearing. But what I find interesting is when you tell people, I have the plan that's going to make things more affordable, and then you tell them it's consolidating, or you're going to have to close down your small school, or you're going to have to regionalize your, you know, they don't want to do that. So I think we have to start helping people recognize that we have to invest together as a larger community instead of a small community and think of our, maybe our county as our community instead of just our little town of Plainfield or Worcester or whatever it might be. So I, I mean, we're already, it already feels like we're big, and so it already feels like we're there, but even we struggle with consolidating. You know, we're two communities, if you think about Barry City and Barry Town, and we're struggling to just work together sometimes as a school district and as a, as municipalities. But how can we get some incentive to say, hey, guys, start working together, and you're going to get more out of this, so.
It's, yeah, if it was easy, everybody'd be doing it, right? I mean, you know, honestly, that, the hardest part of my professional life is when I have to look at a business owner who's put their heart and soul into something and look at them and just say, look, your numbers don't work. And they're not, and demographically, your numbers aren't going to work. And you can keep, you know, you can keep bleeding money, and you probably have enough to hang on for another five years, and then you'll be broke, or you can just stop now. And universally, when they follow that advice, they come back five or six years later, maybe they found something, and they say, thank you. And they said, that was hard advice, but it was good advice, and it was the best advice. And that's really what people have to hear, that, you know, when I first started going to elementary school and kindergarten and first grade, my bus ride was 40 minutes each way. I mean, that's, that's just how it was, because that's, you know, that's where my school was, in Monmouth County. And so that's where I rode the bus to school, and I understood, but, but people can make choices as well, you know, people, they're mobile, they can sell a home and, you know, move to a different community or move closer to school. But, you know, we've watched these numbers now, if you're, you know, how many decades, Senator, have we watched these numbers just trend in the wrong direction? Yeah, and no one stands up and says, this is what we're going to do, county form of government, two-year transition period, get ready, because we're doing it.
I'm on the commission of future public education, I'm on the steering committee in the finance subcommittee. It's an unrealistically short timeframe. There is, I think, when things come out, the basic message is, there is no silver bullet. So stop telling me if I just tax the rich and get $74 million, that would solve our problem, because we put $100 million this year between the taxes and borrowing one-time money and to bind down the tax rate to that bill that all of you hate because it's too high. And we'll have the $30 million from new revenue, but the $70 million, because that was revenue that came in that wasn't in the forecast, and so some of it went to flooding, some of it went to buy down the property tax rate. At the rate that the health insurance is coming in, we have, the projections are right now, nothing official, but it doesn't look like we're going to have another small increase statewide. I know that this is going to put people out of their homes eventually, and it's going to put people, yeah, the rent's going to go up to reflect the rate. So we're going to have to find a way to get through this year, but I know I don't have to tell you, money is finite. I've offered to buy a parenting press, and they won't take me along. If we had the money, we could solve all of this. I can probably raise some money, put in a bill last year, but the treasurer says he can do it without my permission. They did flood recovery bonds after '27, I have some problems I have to deal with. We could raise money that way if we have the bonding capacity, which that's limited. If we're going to consolidate schools, we're going to have to either build a new, bigger school or we're going to have to add on to an existing school, because almost all of our skill at schools were built in the '60s and '70s, except those that were built in the last century. And, well, that is the last century.
Previous century.
Before that, they're all aging. And we haven't been able, regular schools haven't been able to do, many of them, the maintenance that they need to do. Leaky roofs seem to be endemic. I'm not sure where the money's coming from. I've got an estimate of $328 billion to fix the urgent health and safety needs. I have no, there's no way I'm going to raise 328 billion. So we're going to have some difficult choices this year. We can find something, I hope, to do, you know, to deal with the unhoused. We are building as fast as we can, but the cost for building is, you know, is just decreasing what we can, what we can produce. I gather the quality in here in Barry is going to be turned into housing, because I've seen that on the list. There's just, not to mention the, I don't know if it's a plain chicken or what's going on between the Green Mountain Care Board and the University of Vermont Medical Center, but it's got a lot of people in this area upset that we would talk about closing a psych ward when we keep hearing that the emergency rooms got people in the halls, on beds, waiting for psych bed. We're going to have to deal with that. And we'll do the best, I think that we can. We've got a lot of new people. It's always a little more difficult. I think we saw that last session when we added third new people. People make campaign promises, and then they come in and find out it's not that easy. It just takes a while for everybody to kind of settle down and deal with the reality, which is, there is no silver bullet that's going to raise enough money to do everything we need to do. And we are probably not going to see a whole lot of federal assistance. And we just hope we don't see a whole lot of damage. Some of the things like Medicaid may take some hits. If there is mass deportation, our dairy industry is going to be in significant trouble. Since there is that old curse, may be more than interesting times. This is it. And I, but I think the needs are basically the same everywhere. And I would just like to get through one summer, I'm sure we were two.
Not flooding.
So the, I mean, every time it starts to rain, you can just, like sure here, as well as in Montpelier, you can just feel, you know, tense. You just don't know what's going to happen. And we built in the lyrical way, because we're there on the side of the mountains, and sides of the mountains who have landslides. So we've, we've got, it's going to, it's going to take a while to readjust our development patterns, to figure out the trade-offs that need to be made. We may figure out that, yes, we do need some law enforcement on a regional basis, and we are going to have to build some bridges with the law enforcement community and mostly with the general public and make that seem like a job you might want to have, where you might get some public support. And that will take us a while.
It will.
Yes?
Thank you. I think I have a process question, which is that I think we've had a really interesting conversation. I've enjoyed hearing from our representatives and hearing from my fellow counselors about sort of a lot of, as Senator Cummings was just saying, there are enormous challenges in front of both Vermont and Barry City. So I guess my process question is this, we're meeting as a city council and understanding that Barry City as a municipality and as a community has some, has some incredibly deep needs. I certainly have a lot of things I would like to see happen, too. So I'd like to hear from, from our senators and our representative-elect, knowing that we can't get all of this done. How can we, as a council, sort of set a finite list of our very top priorities? And we'll obviously be working on this with, if, as I hope we do, we move forward with being represented by, by a lobbyist next week. So we'll continue to have these conversations, but like, I guess I'm looking for you to tell us, how can we help you focus in on the small handful of things that are most going to benefit Barry City?
What we did last year was, and Tom was here for this as well, among others, but you're not mayor, was, was, like you just said, everything's a priority, right? Housing's in a priority, education funding's a priority, flooding's a priority. But having a list that we can use when we're having conversations with our colleagues and with the administration, saying like, this is what the city of Barry is telling us to do. These are the five things, the seven things, the 10, the 15 things that the city of Barry as a political and municipal body are telling that we need, that gives us a really strong position to go in and negotiate. And of course, like, there's 10 things that y'all will submit. I can think of 10 more things that I'll be working on in the background to try and get done, but when it comes down to the brass tacks of what the city of Barry needs to survive for the next 25, 50 years, getting that list puts us in a really, it just puts us in a much better negotiating position when like, all right, Teddy, you're not going to get your pet project done, all right, fine, but we're going to give the city of Barry what it needs. So, you know, it's up to the council, and I'll recuse myself from those conversations, of what that list looks like, whether it's, you know, is it 10 priorities that are all equal to each other, or is it 10 priorities where number one is number one and number 10 is less important than that, right? So I think, at least from my perspective, and in navigating the Flood Caucus in both chambers and the administration and all these other things, that would be also helpful.
And I would add, I expect to get pretty much exactly that list from the city of Montpelier tomorrow.
Yeah.
And that'll be something that they've voted on together. And, you know, it's funny that, in terms of like, what is a priority, so many of these things are policy areas. It's helpful to know what the higher party policy things are, but the things that are really competing against each other are the financial things, right? So if, it's particularly helpful, I think, to prioritize the financial things that you would want to see. Policies, you know, that's easier, so.
It doesn't cost money, it's easy.
And sometimes you know very quickly that some things on your list aren't going to see the light of day.
Right.
You know, you'll know, you'll speak with, whether it's House or Senate leadership, and you'll just know that, you know, this, you know, number three on your list ain't going to happen. There's no, you know, it's not going to be, not even going to make it to the mini. So it's helpful, as, you know, Counselor Wozzak said, to have that list so that we understand that it's constantly changing. And then all of a sudden, something that was number seven on your list, that you thought was a long shot, gets tacked onto a bill, and all of a sudden, it shoots up to number one.
And that's so important, being able to be flexible, being able to jump on the opportunities of, maybe we have the opportunity to do something great that wasn't on our list. We don't want to have to say no to something great that could.
Well, and I'll add, too, one of the things that was really powerful last year was having Barry and Montpelier working together and having some shared priorities. Because I think that, just from a political perspective, it plays well to say that there's not just one municipality that needs this, there's a whole network of municipalities that need this. And, and so I think that actually also speaks to something you brought up at the very beginning, which was the mayor's coalition. And I realize that that is largely the interests of large municipalities. I think there's a place for that, right? Like, that is still important and helpful, but inasmuch as we can find things that are policy areas or programs that are going to be beneficial to Barry, but also to, yeah, well, and to other municipalities in the area, that helps.
It gets votes.
Yes, it gets votes.
And I think, yeah, if. I did my little spiel so that you understand the kind of pressure we're feeling. We will do our best. You've got two systems. The governor's going to do his budget, have no idea what's in that until he tells us. We get a revenue, and he is building that on the revenue forecast that was done in July by the two economists, the joint forecast. We'll do another forecast in January, and then the legislature will work off of that. Right now, you know, the forecast was revenues look like they're going to go up a little bit, but, you know, not enough to do all of this.
It's not crazy good.
Yeah, not, yeah, we aren't booming. We will work on that. And so the budget will get done, you know, in both bodies based on that revenue, and we can only spend that revenue. If revenue comes in, and that's what happened this year, ahead of forecast, what you do is you set up a waterfall. It says if additional revenues become available, but you have to wait till the books are all closed, you know, at the end of the year, then it will be allocated in this way. So that's where some of your last-minute funding came from. There's always, if something goes wrong, and we have in the past when things suddenly became less rosy, we can do an emergency meeting and reset the revenues down, which nobody likes, but that, before my time, but I think in the 90s, we got in trouble because everybody was estimating, I think there'll be more money and we'll spend it, and we spent one-time money on ongoing programs. And that's when we stopped putting the full pension payments in, and we are still paying the piper on that one. And so a lot of that institutional memory is gone. And so you, we're starting with a whole new group of people saying, no, this fiscal discipline, our fiscal house right now is in order. We have the reserves that Wall Street wants us to have. We didn't. Our pensions, if we keep making our payments, are in good shape. Our retired teachers' health has now got a fund, we're not paying it as we go. So we're, the foundation right now is solid. The challenge is to keep it solid. And then to use the revenues that come in in the way that's going to help us. Definitely anything to do with flooding, both recovery and, you know, and mitigation is going to be up there. Number one is going to be property taxes. I mean, that, that's, and I think we're going to have to come, I think we've got at least one more really bad year, unless we can find some money to buy it down again, but even then it'll be a bad year. But we, we need to have a plan going forward, and we need to have that plan to say, okay, if we can get through this year, then next year, we're going to do X, and we're going to do Y. And I think at least some of us on the commission have come to recognize that it's really not fair to ask locally-elected school boards to make some of these really difficult decisions because it's your friends and neighbors that stop talking to you, and they unelect you next year, and we start all over again. So the state is going to have to take some responsibility in creating a structure. And so the state is going to have to take some responsibility in creating a structure that helps school boards make what we think is the right decision. But it's going to be a process. I hope the governor will become active in that. We're going to ask him in to bring his ideas and put them on the table on the first week, and so we can add, subtract, and work with those so that we don't end up at the end of the session with, I'm going to veto it, and we go home with nothing. So it's going to take all hands on deck with this one, both the administration and the legislature, because the pain out there is real. I can't do anything about grocery prices. I hate going into the grocery store right now. And that's hurting people. Was it 22% in three years groceries went up? But we need to be able to give people hope so that they hold on. I wish, in the '92 flood, one of our local businesses donated money, and the city people were able to go around and give a $2,000 check to every business that was hit. It's just having that cash in hand that, it gave them hope. And FEMA might give you more than that, but it takes five years. And at that point, you're pretty hopeless, and nobody's had enough money to do that with the extent of the flooding we've had. But I think we're going to need to give people hope that we can get a handle on their property taxes, that maybe we put a moratorium on tax sales. I don't know. You know, that we're not, we're going to do something so that you can keep your home and you can put food on your table and your kids can get educated. But the last time we did that, I think it was Franklin Roosevelt, maybe, you know, or somebody with the diplomacy of Winston Churchill. But that's, I've never seen the people in this state this kind of demoralized. And we're going to really have to work to lift them up and give them hope. And I'm hoping we can all kind of work together to do that. Because, yeah, they're sad out there. They really are.
Absolutely. Yes?
Thank you, Senator. I'm not sure how I can follow that, to be honest. Wholly in favor of a New Deal, if that's what we're talking about. I'm sort of circling back to my previous process question. I've been doing a lot of listening, both to our elected representatives and to fellow councilors, in the, in idea of responding to what you so helpfully shared, which is about prioritization as a council and putting the city's needs in a clear framework for you all to work on. I sort of have something to suggest to the council, which is that I had jotted down five areas that I hear, have heard coming to the top this evening amongst conversation. And I'll read them in a moment. If council is amenable, I'd be happy to go back over sort of the conversations at these meetings and start to gather some of the more specific suggestions to respond to your wishes, more specific suggestions that people have put forward, and perhaps circulate that ahead of council for next week for us to begin to develop that document. Because, as the mayor had suggested, December is coming up fast for a potential conversation with lobbyists. So I think it would be to our benefit to put something down, to move forward as one as a council, and get it to our legislators to hit the ground running in the first week of January. So that's my long way of saying the five areas that I have been hearing. And this is not to say this has captured everything that we discussed tonight, but here are five big areas that I've heard this evening. Flood resiliency, regionalization. I grouped mental health support and addressing the drug crisis under public health as one area, housing, and addressing the needs of the unhoused in Vermont, and especially here, but in Berry and Montpelier. And to Barry's point previously, of having a coherent plan going forward for how to support people. So those are five areas that I've been hearing this evening. Not everything.
Practically, TIF district extension is a slam dunk because it doesn't cost any money. So, you know, if you can go to, anytime that a municipality can go to the legislature and say, if you do this, and while you're struggling with the money, if you do this, and it doesn't cost you any money, that's when you get the quick yes answer, saying, oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah. Well, TIFs are under fire for those non-educated expenses that are put in the Ed Fund. It's a tenet of faith, you either believe it or you don't, that but for the TIF, that economic development would not happen.
Right.
But if we're going to do something like a housing TIF or anything with those taxes, I doubt I can get both through. So that's, it, there will be, maybe, I'll try.
Well, but if we took a regional approach, which is what I was outlining, you know, that would not be specific to Berry.
No.
It would be something, you know, a pilot of 250 housing units, where you might say, well, Berry, you definitely get 50. Montpelier, you definitely get 50. And the rest are up for grabs throughout central Vermont.
Yeah.
And we just take the applications in the order that they're presented, that, you know, that sort of regional. I think you're going to hear, I think regional is going to be the overused word in the Senate and the House of Representatives this year. Everyone's, because, you know, let's face it, we don't have a lot of taxing capacity. You said it yourself. People talk about, well, tax the millionaires, it's easy. No, it actually doesn't work.
No, it won't be $74 million. That's a drop in the bucket. I mean, it sounds like a lot of money, but it's not.
So when you look at that, obviously, we've got to make structural changes, you know, and that means regionalization, that means consolidation, it means, you know, unfortunately, the things that like flood mitigation, that takes a long time, and it's hard for people, especially in this day and age, to stay focused on something more than 30 seconds. And we're talking about things that take years. So, so thank you. I appreciate so much. I mean, I know how hard all of you work. Not yet you, but you will.
And I will just say.
No, it's not a, you know, people think, well, like, on Monday, they don't realize that you spend Saturday, Sunday, and Monday meeting with constituents and other groups and just doing the work. And that the work doesn't end at 4:30 in the evening, you know, then the work, a lot of the work just begins, so.
We have meetings every day this week, most days two and three.
I know you do. I know, I know all of you do. And the support that, you know, the support that I felt personally from you, from all of you, who represent us in Montpelier, I just want to let you know, it's not lost on me, and I appreciate it. I know how much you give up, and I just really appreciate that you make yourselves available. Council Stockwell?
I'm just wondering, in terms of the process, that we could all get Amanda's five categories and fill them out, so that we come to next meeting with, here's my five, and then just vote for the top five?
Get to the final refined.
Well, first of all, we're going to have the top 15, because we're going to have, we're going to have a big list, because if you don't ask, you don't get. And we're going to rank them. So I'd prefer to have more, I mean, five broad categories.
Yes, that's what I'm, yes. Just to be clear.
That's what I'm asking, that we have her five broad categories.
Yeah, I just, I want to, just to revisit, because I realized I said it in a slightly convoluted way, to revisit what I had proposed doing, and that was, I had read off the five categories of groups of things that I heard this evening, go back over our conversation this evening, re-watch the meeting, whatever, take down the various initiatives that various councilors had expressed an interest in, put those, under those five categories, and use that as a basis to start doing exactly what Councilor Stockwell just, and the mayor just proposed, prioritizing within those areas so that we can slim it down to something actionable to give our representation.
That'd be great, Senator.
Yes.
And just looking at...
All of us have sat on that side of a table. So I know how much work goes on there, too. I mean, I think anybody that works in any form of governance.
Perfect.
Works hard.
And just to tag on that, what I'd ask the council to do is strike the balance between finding us, you know, we don't want to exclude anything, but we also don't want to be seen as walking in with a wish list, because every community has a wish list. So just keep that in mind when you're deciding how many things to include in your final votes, et cetera, of, you know, we always want to ask for more, because as you go through negotiations, you lose certain things. But we also don't want to just be dismissed right off the bat of like, all right, here come the very asking for local...
Well, you don't want someone to say, are you living in La La Land?
Yeah.
Not seeing the numbers that are out there.
So we can, so we can have that, too. The manager was just telling me that our lobbyists will be here on the 10th. And so after the 10th, so after the meeting on the 10th, it won't mean that it's not subject to change, like everything is, but we'll have a pretty, we'll shoot to have a pretty good list to you by the 10th.
This year is slow. We can put in bills anytime. Next year, the Senate has like a December 5th or something end date to put bills in.
Yeah.
So next year, but this year, we have...
More flexibility.
...a lot to open, so we can work on things and put bills in as we go.
Fantastic.
We'll get them in the works.
Fantastic.
Okay, good.
Anything did we, anything we didn't cover? And if there's ever anything we can do for any of you, you know, besides being prepared, having a good list, but as, you know, I mean, I would get those calls sometimes from you, Senator, saying, can you be down here in 35 minutes? Because I didn't realize this committee was talking about this, and they're going. And we run down.
Now you're going to have to zoom in. That does make it easier.
So if there's ever anything that any of the council or manager can do for any of you, please, just ask.
Probably call the manager and let him decide who he wants to call, but...
Perfect.
I got that lecture the first night on the city council. Do not call the Public Works Director. Call the manager if you have any problems.
Yes.
One last wrap-up point. I know we all have shared a lot of ideas this evening. If you come up with something else that was not shared this evening, please just email me, and I will put it on that list that I will have for council. I will aim to share that with the manager so that it is in next week's package.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. It was very kind of you. I appreciate your time.
Except for Teddy. We do not appreciate Teddy's time, is that what you're saying?
Okay. Council, upcoming business for the next few weeks, we're going to be focusing solely on our legislative priorities. I think that's where our focus needs to be. Yes?
I would also like more information from the city manager about what a master plan for infrastructure would look like. So if we're thinking about like what that need is, how complicated is it? How expensive is it?
Well, I mean, a lot of that would be understanding, so we talked about that. We talked about our stormwater plan. It's kind of hard to come up with a master plan when you don't even understand the condition of much of your infrastructure.
That's why we would need a master plan, I believe. That's what we were saying last week.
Right. We're starting that. We're doing an assessment of our stormwater system.
Understand.
So we're, yeah, so we're doing that now. So you want an outline of...
Nope. I just want to know more about if we're going to do a master plan, not just for stormwater, but for the whole replacement of infrastructure, like, how do we do that? How much does it cost? What kind of timeline? That's what I'm interested in. And I'd also, you know, there's a lot of talk about crime. I remember the last time we had a police report, it didn't look like actually there was any increase in crime. So I'm wondering if we could get an updated police report that would compare this year to last year, or this fall to last fall, and say, is there an increase in property crime? Is there an increase in violent crime? Or maybe you just know that city manager.
Yeah, I can, so the, I believe the last update we had was when we talked about our increased overtime patrols. The quality of life issues are exponentially up. I can recirculate it, and I can have the chief probably join us.
I think we should do that.
Yeah.
Let's recirculate that.
Yep. But there was an increase.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, folks? Okay. New seat, Teddy.
I'm writing Nicholas a note.
That's all good. Roundtable, Council Stockwell.
I'll pass.
Council Spalding?
I have nothing, thank you.
Council Wazak?
Yes, I...
Ready? I can go before you come back?
No, it's good, it's good. I put this on Front Porch Forum and Facebook, and I submitted a commentary to The Times Argus today about how to stay in touch with me as your representative. You can go to teddyforberry.com, and there's a thing to sign up for a newsletter. And I'll be sending out weekly or bi-weekly newsletters throughout the legislative session on what is happening in Montpelier and how it directly relates to Berry. And my legislative email is ewazak, you can look on the website, at ledge.state.vt.us. And so that'll be printed, look for that on Front Porch Forum, and that's how you can let me know what you think about all we're getting up to.
Okay. Council Austin?
A brief note of appreciation for the Friends of the Matthews and Playground. I had a constituent approach me. He took his kids there regularly, loves the playground, but it had been damaged, vandalized, unfortunately. And I connected him with some members of that group. The city public works folks are already on fixing it, and they are going to hold a gathering this, this spring, and my neighbor is going to be part of that gathering going forward to talk about ways to take care of that playground. We also, they also submitted a grant to do some work on that playground that I was very pleased to write a letter of support for, representing Ward 2, and is an absolute gem of a little park in that neighborhood. And I'm really glad that the people in that neighborhood have such pride in it.
Thank you, Council Dearing.
Kind of pride, Vermont Coyotes, excited about them for next week. They're going to have some stuff going on on Sunday, the 24th, at the auditorium. They're going to have a 9:30 open gym to the public, 10 o'clock, meet and greet with some team leadership and coaching. 11 to 1, they'll be doing open runs and scrimmage for players who want to show their, the coaching staff, their skills. And then they're going to have a community dinner from 1 to 3. Be a great opportunity for everyone to get together and have a great community meal with a new community partner.
Fantastic. Thank you. So, Council, I do hope you take the opportunity to get to know Mr. Cozy over the next coming weeks, coming months. Speak with Art Deserot, who served with Eugene in Vietnam and got to know him well. Art gave some remarks at Eugene's service. I mean, I knew Eugene well, but it was fascinating to speak with many of his family members after his passing about how much growing up in the North End actually meant to him, about how much. And if you look at the, well, I'd encourage you to go and look at the Cozy Family Mausoleum that Eugene had commissioned this summer, and then I'd be happy to tell you the story behind it and the discussions that I had with him and why he did that. So I hope you take that opportunity over the coming weeks and months, and we'll be in touch with that. Council, we do need an executive session, we'll entertain a motion for findings, we'll be discussing labor negotiations.
So moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, and I'll need a motion to go into executive session. Manager will be joining us to brief us on labor negotiations. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you. The council will be in executive session. David, we do not expect any action.
And I'm going to shut down the Zoom since we're...
Yeah, just, we'll be shutting the Zoom down.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. The, is that the new house mausoleum? Yeah, it's gorgeous. I saw that the other day.
Yeah. All right.
Zoom is still very much active.
It is.
[laughing].